This is Tuesday, August the 2nd. We are in room 1010. I am joined by, I'm Councilmember Jan Perry, joined by Councilmember Richard Alarcon. Mr. CLA, I think you had some items that we could consent or?
Yes, ma'am.
Take out of order.
Certainly. Raphael Perret with the CLA's office. We'd like to recommend for consent item number three, which relates to a DWP report, city attorney report relative to CIO agreement for energy trading purposes. It's pretty standard agreement for service reliability. And then, next, we'd like to recommend that you cover number two. We now have a report back from the city attorney and a DWP relative to the Goldman Sachs agreement in connection with the Navajo generation station.
All right, and I think, Mr. Alarcon, you had a particular interest in that one. So, why don't we do number two first, and then we'll go back to number one, and leave the maximum amount of time for that. Who's here on number two? Who can speak on number two for us today?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the committee. My name's Eric Darke. I'm the Director of External Generation for the Department of Water and Power. The city attorney did, as requested, prepare a report on the questions that were raised at your last meeting where this was considered. She is on her way, but I'd be happy to begin to walk through those.
That'd be great.
If she goes up.
If you can.
We can continue.
Yeah, that's fine.
The first question, what were the reasons for the delay in the sale of the Navajo generating station? As I mentioned, we have had Goldman Sachs onboard for about three years, and they have prepared numerous reports for us. And it seems each time a new general manager comes into the department, he wishes to review the work that has been done. And then, and they've continued to prepare those reports. And in fairness to Goldman Sachs, the department has never told them, "Go ahead and pull the trigger." They've prepared numerous reports and studies for us, and have helped us prepare all the documents that would require to actually issue this for sale, but we've never given them authorization to finalize that. So, the decision on pulling the trigger has been made at the level of the general manager. The second-
How many times has-
Not pulling the trigger.
Yeah. How many times has that decision been deferred?
Two or three times. Yeah, several general managers. The second question was relating to, "Is Goldman Sachs a subject to any current investigations for fraud or financial crimes involving municipalities?" And the city attorney reviewed the disclosure statements of Goldman Sachs and concluded that they don't believe there's any disciplinary actions pending by the SEC against Goldman Sachs that includes municipalities.
That is what it says, city attorney.
Yes. Now, the third question, "Does the city of Los Angeles or other municipalities have pending civil lawsuits against Goldman Sachs?" And it appears that there are Goldman Sachs or some of their subsidiaries have been named in lawsuits by the city of Los Angeles against a number of firms, including JP Morgan, FSA Capital, Bank of America, AIG, and others, and Goldman Sachs was subsequently named as a defendant in that lawsuit. And more recently, the office of the city attorney has filed suit against a company, Health Markets, Megalife and Health Insurance Company, and Midwest National Life Insurance Company for allegedly selling junk health insurance products. Goldman Sachs has also been named in that lawsuit due to its acquisition of the above-named defendants in 2006. The fourth question was, "DWP have any viable alternatives to Goldman Sachs within the field of mergers and acquisition advisors?" And clearly, there are a number of firms out there who provide these services. When we went out to bid, I think we sent it out to six pre-qualified firms. Five responded. So, there are other alternative firms. Many of them have also been named in similar types of lawsuits. But there are alternatives. I don't know, would you like to pick up? Shanice Black is here now from the city attorney's office.
I apologize for being late. And I apologize for this report being delayed. I have a heavy workload, so, not that that's an excuse, but I tried to get it more timely to you.
I think we were on question number five.
Okay. The fee structure in the RFPs pretty much range the same with the exception of one of the proposers, which was RBC Capital Markets. They had a two-tiered structure. Usually, most of the proposers had more or less a six-tiered structure based upon the value of the transaction would be assigned a certain number of basis points. That's compensation for the investment banker. And then, with respect to number six, I outlined pretty much verbatim what the contract says with respect to sections 801 and 802 on the department's termination rights.
The original reason that the city wanted to sell the Navajo plant was for environmental protection?
I think there's a multitude of reasons why it was up for sale. That's certainly one of them. Also, by state law, we're required to exit by 2019, and the feeling was perhaps the value would diminish as we got closer to that date.
Okay, so, if we sold it, then somebody else would operate it?
We would sell a 21% share of the plant, and, I mean, the other-
So, it would continue to operate?
It's likely that the person paying for it would want to see some value for their purchase.
So, we only owe 21%?
That's correct.
And has there been any interest in purchasing that 21%?
We've certainly heard from a number of people, and as, until you actually see bids, it's difficult to predict how many people would bid. And, I mean, I think the current co-owners would be a good pool of people since they're very aware of the plant and its operating performance, and they would certainly be among those most interested.
Well, how much control of the operation of the plant do we have? If we have 21% interest, I mean, can we just reduce the production?
As a whole, or our off-take?
Our 21%, could we just reduce what we use?
We could certainly reduce-
Why don't, if this is an interest in environmental protection, and we want to move from coal-producing power to alternative forms, have we not considered just reducing our use of that plant and not selling it?
Well, you have to tell them, explain to the committee why we have to divest.
May I respond to that question? Well, there are two parts to it. We're subject to SB 1368, in which we can't import into California the so-far dirty coal, so we're assessing that. Also, that doesn't relieve us of our contractual obligations, and currently, Navajo is being considered for best available retrofit technology, which will potentially increase the cost to the current owners in a substantial amount. And I believe the Sierra Club was present last time to briefly discuss about that. So, even if we diminished our off-take as a co-owner, we still would be responsible for the operations of the plant and the associated expenses to operate it, unless they actually divest of our entire interest.
So, but if we divest, then the plant will go to full utilization?
It may maintain full utilization, but we would be at-
Beyond 2019?
Correct, but it wouldn't be, the law that is at issue is a state law. There are other co-owners who aren't subject to that law.
No, I understand that, but from an environmental protection perspective, I'm just wondering if there was a way we could gain control of the production to truly have a positive environmental impact, as opposed to just, just not using it? I mean, as opposed to selling it where it would have 100% production?
I, just from my understanding of the operations, I don't see how we can do that without incurring additional cost. If we're doing a cost-benefit analysis, or we can-
What if, what if, what if, what if we cut a deal with the state?
The state of California?
Yeah.
On SB 1368?
Pardon me?
On 1368, or?
Yeah, and we said, "We will, rather than end our contract," look, my goal is to stay consistent with the policy consideration of the environmental protection issue. And I concur with the state's legislation to force us out of this plant, if you will. And it seems to me that we could have a greater environmental impact if we didn't use it, as opposed to selling it, which would continue to have it being used.
Well, what is our share, the 400, approximately 400 megawatts?
477 megawatts of output are currently, that's our ownership share. And I guess it has many perspectives, but some would say, if the market value is estimated to be $350 to $500 million, are we willing to walk away from that?
Well, we have to walk away in 2019.
And I guess the-
Is that not correct?
That's correct, but-
So, the value is not that much?
If we sell it, it could be.
Well, what would we sell it for?
That's the estimate.
Let your neighbor jump in there.
Councilman Randy Howard, Director of Resource Planning for-
Move the mic up here.
Director of Resource Planning for the power system. You know, one of the issues in looking at the potential for divestiture is, I think was highlighted, was the economics. The plant is currently going through three EIRs today related to its own ability to extend and operate. And one of the big issues there is, there are federal laws related to emission controls that might need to be put on. So regardless of our ability to continue operating beyond 2019, there might be a very large capital investment to reduce the emissions and clean up the emissions out of the facility. So, based on those economics, we will probably not want to make that kind of investment ourselves and allow the others or a new entrant to come in and make those large investments necessary to continue the plant to operate. The plant will probably not operate without those types of investments going forward. So, there are federal rules now.
The marketability of this sale is further reduced.
Is, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question?
The potential return on the sale of this plant is reducing as the operational costs are going up. So, the longer we wait to sell this, the less we're going to get for it.
And I think that's why we were considering looking at those options today on selling earlier than the 2019 date.
Well, we were ready to sell it a long time ago, four years ago. We set this in motion, so what happened? So, how much are we going to lose because you waited?
Well, I don't know that we have a number on how much we're going to lose. I think what we wanted to do was test the market, determine the value of it versus the cost of retention or the potential investments necessary going forward.
What was the estimate of how much money we were going to make four years ago, when we decided this?
The estimated range is about the same as it is today, and it was three years ago, roughly, that we tested the market, a little less than three years ago.
Okay, but we haven't sold it?
That's correct.
So, doesn't seem to be a market out there?
We don't know that because we haven't officially put it on the market. As I said, we have heard inquiries from a number-
Oh, so your estimates are just, they're not really based on actual offers?
That's correct.
But if you're saying that the federal government is imposing additional requirements in terms of best available technology, I gotta believe that's going to have a negative impact on the sale of the plant in terms of the cash amount?
Yes, it will.
I'd sure like to know how much we lost because we haven't sold this thing.
I don't know that I would characterize that we've lost-
No, no, you didn't. I did. I characterized it that way.
Yeah, I think what we have, as we've been monitoring the market, one of the items that we've seen is, there's been excess generation available in the market, obviously with the economic downturn across all of the western states, that right now probably wasn't the best time to be looking at a divestiture.
Oh, so you're saying that because there are further restrictions on coal production or energy production in general, that the demand has increased on this plant because they need to produce, they need to produce energy no matter what, and so, so maybe the value went up for dirty production of fuel?
No, what I'm saying is, current market conditions, the loads have been down for most utilities across the western states, so there's been less demand necessary.
Okay, good.
So, right now, the market value of generation has probably been reduced. We've seen a decline in gas prices and other things. Right now, what we're looking at is, are the economics associated with a potential divestiture, as well as what additional resources are we going to be required to bring on to replace it? And what are the costs of those resources?
No, I understood what you were saying, but I was making a different point, and that is, that the longer we wait, the less this thing will generate in terms of cash. And that's, I mean, that's a principle of economics as well, isn't it? I mean, when we have a horrible economy, and people are strapped for money, and we have pressure to close this thing by 2019, it would seem to me, the closer we get to 2019, the less we're going to get. Now, I'm not an economist, but I don't think you have to be an economist to figure that one out.
So, what do you want to do with this today? You want to move this forward to council without a recommendation? I know the original issue for you was the concerns about Goldman Sachs.
Well, I would, I would, I think DWP has done a woeful job on this particular sale in the sense that they haven't tested other options to, number one, increase the rate of return for the sale of this property, and number two, transition us out of a dirty production of energy. And, and, you know, we shouldn't have to, we shouldn't have to shift, which is the report I got back, was that essentially, we had four general managers who couldn't make a decision on this, and so, so, you know, blame it on those guys, but we'll probably have four more in the next five years. So, are we gonna, are we gonna say it again? I'm not being facetious either.
Well, would you, you want to focus on asking them to come back with a rate of return analysis that might provide a greater yield for us?
I think that's an excellent suggestion, and that's exactly the kind of thing we should, what I would like to see are, what are other options? I believe that 21% is worth something. It has value, and that value is not necessarily best utilized in terms of environmental concerns necessarily just by selling it. Maybe we can wield that, the power of ownership to get something better for it environmentally and get us more money.
If we do this after the recess, Mr. CLA, that's not going to cause us a-
Actually, it will. This is a time limit file, which will be deemed approved. So, one way to approach this would be to forward it to council without recommendation, have the department and council report on the issues, councilman has expressed, and see if perhaps there we could come up with a solution.
All right, so you frame it the way you want it framed.
Okay, number one, I would like for, I would like to get an analysis of how much or what the market value of this site has been over the last four years. Has it diminished in terms of its potential return, or has it improved? I would like an analysis on that. I would also like to know, are there other more viable options environmentally that we might negotiate with the state to create new legislation that would give us a better option than the path we're pursuing relative to the closure in 2019, not from a money perspective, but from an environmental perspective? And, and I, with regard to Goldman Sachs, you know, it's hard to say four general managers couldn't make a decision. I mean, it seems to me that DWP has been dragging its feet on this because they just want to keep producing dirty power. But, and I think that's what the general public would feel about it. If that's not the case, then Goldman Sachs hasn't done a very good job of selling this thing or giving us a scenario where we could sell this, so why would we want to continue a contract with them?
You've also been joined by Mr. Cardenas.
You've already said there's other organizations that can do this deal. I don't know why we should be wedded to a non-performer.
When are we going to council?
We could determine that, but it has to be prior to the middle of this month.
Okay, so that gives you just a very small window of time to be able to come up with a yield analysis and some options that the councilman has asked for. We also have a card on this.
I'm done.
Okay. I can't read it. We have one card. Dr. C.T.W., and I think it's N.I.A.M.S. Williams? Oh, Dr. Williams, oh my God, you really need to work on your printing.
He's a doctor, he's allowed to-
Oh, my God.
He's allowed to sign his name.
No, I just, I mean, how many times a day do I see your name, and then the one time? Wow, you gotta, you gotta, you gotta practice your printing. Okay, I'm sorry.
Change your pace.
Okay.
You know, I was a little slow this morning. 8:30, you know, come on, 8:30. Hey, Dr. Clyde Williams, LA 32 Neighborhood Council, El Serena. There's a couple of things in this. Number one, do you actually have a schedule as to what's going to go on with the Navajo? And have they complied with it? If they haven't complied with it, then hey, cancel the contract. This is fairly easy. If it's a problem of DWP, which it might have been, as I hope we don't have another five managers in the next five years, but what we need is a schedule, something that is publicly available, that there is commitments, that I would assume the project management and their PMIS, or whatever they call it now, schedule, has a schedule as to what is the performance, what is required. This is, this is not new. So, number one, you need a schedule on this and compliance with it, some sort of means of enforcing it. OPR or OPA, maybe, I don't know. But the main element is, number one, they didn't comply for whatever reasons. You have alternatives. Rebidding it, difficult. You have a basic problem back in the text of it as to, does anyone have right of first refusal? And is it on a meet or beat proposition? We don't know. A million dollars per megawatt is a very low number these days, especially since you have all the transmission involved in it and everything. It's there available. So, it's a question as to get something in writing that they have to comply with, make it as schedule, so that we can achieve the goals that we've been mandated.
All right, thank you, Dr. C.T. Williams. Thank you. Thank you. All right.
Clyde Thomas.
Thank you. I'm glad you cleared that up for me. All right, so we'll send this forward to council without a recommendation. We've also been joined by Mr. Peretz, so we have a full complement, or nearly full. So, we have a quorum. We continue to item number three.
Actually, you approved it on consent, but now you have a full committee if you'd like to consider-
We can go back if no one has an objection on item three.
Okay.
Okay. All right, and then we're going to move this item forward to council without recommendation.
I wanted to vote no, but-
Oh, you want to vote no? Okay.
Just do a minority response.
All right. So, we'll record Mr.?
Two.
Yeah, two.
Two.
And Mr. Alarcon is a no. And you want to be a no too?
No, no.
Okay.
I just want to make sure I'm no over voting.
Okay, and then we will ask the department to be prepared with the option and yield analysis by the time this comes to council. So then we go back to item number one, and that one is much more extensive, and I do not necessarily think we will finish this today, because I think it's a very controversial item, and I think it needs to be fully vetted. What I'd like to do, if my committee members do not object, is to get the public comment cards up front, and then, we have seven of them, and I'm just going to call people up. And if you don't need to take the entire two minutes, please feel free not to, but let me just call you all up. We have four chairs up here. So, I'm going to call Samuel Unger, Samuel Unger, are you still here? And then Tom Ford, come on up. Is Doug Arsenault here? Okay, great. And then Kirsten James. Great. Hey, Samuel Unger.
Thank you, Chair, is this on? Yes. Thank you, Chair Perry, and members of the Energy and Environment Subcommittee, Committee. I'm Samuel Unger. I'm the executive officer of the State of California Regional Water Quality Control Board, and I'm here to speak in favor of this motion. Basically, what, I've been working with the city for a number of years now. I was involved in the collections system settlement agreement for the state way back nearly 10 years ago, and I've seen the city make incredible improvements to their sewer infrastructure, and it's reflected in the way that the statistics show the number of spills that have dramatically been reduced. It's been a great improvement to the quality of life to people here in Los Angeles. And I would just like to bring to the council's attention, I'm sure you're very well aware that, especially listening to the last set of comments, that this is infrastructure that needs to be maintained. The city has invested quite a bit over the last 10 years in settling the settlement agreement, but now that you have this in place, this is an investment that the city's made in support really of the health and welfare of all of its citizens, and that investment now needs to be maintained. There's other projects that need to be associated with that in terms of the treatment plants themselves to comply with newer regulations. We're looking at increased amounts of wastewater that can be recycled and used within the city to help the city with its water balance overall. So, in general, I'd like to say the state is very supportive of the motion. We think it's well timed, it needs to be done here in the city, so you can maintain the investment that you've already made in improving the citizens' lives.
Thank you. Tom Ford.
Yes, good morning, committee members. I'm Tom Ford, the Director of Marine Programs for the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission. For those of you not familiar with us, it's our mission to improve the water quality, conserve and rehabilitate natural resources, and protect the bay's benefits and values. Surely, the investments that Bureau of Sanitation Engineering, CONAD, have contributed to our bay have not gone unnoticed. There have been discreet, direct benefits to the bay's health. These are featured in our 2010 State of the Bay Report, and amongst them are a 90% reduction in the suspended solids being placed into the bay, and a return of life to many areas of the ocean floor in Santa Monica Bay. Perhaps of greatest note because of the- Perhaps of greatest note because of the attention it deserves are the reductions in beach closures that are credited to the reduction in sewage spills that are directly benefiting our tourist-based coastal economies and our quality of life in Los Angeles. In a previous job of mine as the Santa Monica Bay Keeper, in context to the Collections Systems Settlement Agreement that Sam mentioned, I worked very closely with Enrique Adel, Ali Pusti, the guys in the street actually working on the system itself. And, all I can tell you is that I've been very impressed throughout my entire involvement with them, with the capacity, ingenuity, confidence, and fantastic plan that this team has put forth. I'm, it's been some of the most proud relationships I've had with the City of Los Angeles, existing in BOS. And in closing, the Clean Water Program put in front of you today is my full support. The BOS, I feel, is acting in a fiscally and foresightful manner, doing more with less as we are all forced to do right now, and acting with appropriate discretion to protect our environment, the economy, and best, and to best assure compliance with regulations in front of them. So, most importantly, this plan maintains high quality of life we enjoy in LA from inland neighborhoods to the beach-
Thank you.
And in the bay. Thank you.
Okay, Doug Arseno, and then Kirsten James. And then, after Kirsten will be Simbola Wright and Doctor Williams. Doctor C.T. Williams again. C.T., you can come back up. Doug Arseno, you guys can free up those first two seats and let the next two people come on up. Hey, Doug, and then Kirsten.
Thank you, council members. My name is Doug Arseno. I represent the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, VICA, who in turn represents over three hundred and sixty businesses in the city that have created over one hundred thousand jobs, middle-class jobs. VICA supports the Bureau of Sanitation's plan for the maintenance of its Clean Water Program. While the increases will impact resident commercial budgets, deterioration of the system will be of significantly greater cost to Angelinos due to the unacceptable health and financial concerns of pipe spillage. We applaud the Bureau for taking appropriate steps to reduce operating costs and increase efficiency before calling upon its customers to offset costs. Furthermore, we appreciate that the Bureau has assessed a ten-year financial plan as to ensure SSC rates are not raised all at once, and have involved stakeholders in the process, having presented to VICA on two separate occasions. Despite the short-term consequences on businesses and residents, reasonable and timely renovations to our wastewater infrastructure will be beneficial to the city in the long term, environmentally and financially. VICA urges you to approve the rate changes unanimously and send the matter to the entire council for final approval. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Kirsten James, Simbola Wright, Doctor Williams. And then, our last speaker today will be Stephanie Taylor. Stephanie, still here? Come on up. Okay, Kirsten.
Good morning. My name is Kirsten James, and I'm the Water Quality Director with Heal the Bay. Heal the Bay strongly supports the proposed fee increase. Twenty-six years ago, when we were founded, we were founded upon the issue of decaying wastewater infrastructure in the city. After many years of rebuilding Hyperion and other wastewater treatment plants and replacing sewer lines that were well past their safe, useful life, the city went from one of the poorest systems with more than two sewage spills a day to one of the most reliable systems in the country. In the nineties, just to put some context on the issue, we saw sewage on the streets adjacent to where students were going to school. In the eighties, we saw nearly half of Santa Monica Bay beaches closed by enormous sewage spills from broken pump stations, leaky sewers, and an overcapacity. The Bureau of Sanitation has transformed the sewer system to a reliable, well-managed infrastructure, but the last few years of belt tightening to spare ratepayer fee increases have come at a cost. Infrastructure repair, capital projects are now a priority for the city. We do not want to return to the days of decaying infrastructure and threats to public health. We have analyzed the list of wastewater projects, and they are all basic needs to keep a functioning sewer system. Even with the fee increases, the sewer service charges will put the city near the average of sewer service charges for major US cities. As you know, Heal the Bay is a strong supporter of integrated water resources planning. Unfortunately, this fee increase can't fund rainwater capture and water recycling projects with an overwhelming water quality and water supply reliability need for LA, and that needs to be something that's considered in the near future. So, in conclusion, Heal the Bay supports the proposed fee to upgrade, operate, and maintain sewer infrastructure to protect public health and the environment. Thank you.
Simbola Wright.
Good morning, Simbola Wright. I'm a resident of the City of Los Angeles. I'm a employee for the City of Los Angeles, I'm a wastewater collection worker, so I know what it means without, what it would be without this rate increase, such as the spill in South LA and in the valley. We, as employees, are very dedicated to continuing, to keep the number-one service in California. We are the best in California. We work really hard, and this is something that's very important to continue. We need the rate increase. We have the largest wastewater collection system in the United States. We serve over four million people, over four million people, and small, other cities, other small cities also. It would be really something for the system to overflow and my children, you know, backing into properties and, you know, my kids going into that type of stuff. But, it's, like I said, it's very important, and I support this, and I hope each and every one of you support this also. Thank you.
Thank you. Doctor Williams.
Doctor Clyde Williams. Forty years ago, I designed my first sewage treatment plant. Twenty years ago, we were operating a sewage treatment plant in Dubai, United Arab Emirates. So, I have some experience. I'm also a life member of the Sierra Club. However, you're going to double the rates in the next ten years. Doubling the rates. Right now, my solid waste and sewage fees are about twice as much as my DWP fees. There's also a matter that, in this particular realm, we have a stormwater issue lying someplace in the county. Because, they won't change the fees directly, they will change the fees via the tax rule. And they saw stormwater fee there. Yes, they have not been raised in a long time. They should have been. Why not? Were they trying to avoid something? Now, we have the accumulation of deferred maintenance, a hundred and sixty nine, they gotta do, just to keep up, sixty-seven miles of sewers every year, plus-plus. Same problem in DWP, deferred maintenance, deferred maintenance. Keep it, keep the rates low as possible because people will react against them. People will want to know. So, in this particular case, we have mandated costs that weren't fought. They weren't appealed, they weren't challenged. We have doubling of the fees to pay for new things, new mandates. And Hyperion still sits there as the eight-hundred-pound gorilla if you have to go to advanced treatment with that. So, there's some real problems. One of the things is transparency and visibility, and specifically, let's have a ratepayers' advocate for the department.
Okay, C.T., I've got two questions for you.
Yeah. Mr. Williams, you mentioned at the beginning of your two minutes that you're here as an individual, but you also mentioned an organization that you're a member of, the Sierra Club, was it?
I am a life member of the Sierra Club.
Okay. Are you speaking on behalf of the Sierra Club?
No, I am not.
What's the Sierra Club, has the Sierra Club taken a position on matters such as rate increase for sewer service charge?
Not yet. They have avoided any discussion of the ratepayers' advocate for DWP, so that's indicative of that.
I'm sorry, you said what about a ratepayers' advocate?
Put the mic in front of your-
Okay. The-
Sounds like avoided.
Right now, the Sierra Club has considered the DWP's ratepayers' advocate and chose not to make a position on that. So, that would be indicative of the same sort of thing for this. The basic issue is, I'm also a member of the neighborhood councils. The neighborhood councils are very concerned about rate increases. This is, and a lot of them have higher rates for solid waste and sewage than for DWP.
Are either of those organizations, as far as you're aware, are they aware that we have a Clean Water Act and that the City of Los Angeles has conceded to consent decrees upon consent decrees? Consent decrees usually come after a lawsuit. And usually, excuse me for a second, usually organizations like the Sierra Club and Heal the Bay and other organizations, that their primary focus is the environment, tend to be the organizations of individuals like yourself who actually commence those lawsuits. That, in this case, it looks like the City of Los Angeles ended up consenting to some kind of mitigations over and over and over again. I would hope and expect that that, those mitigations are the kinds of things that organizations like the Sierra Club and hopefully neighborhood councils understand that those consent decrees put a burden on this department or the city as a whole. However, the main objective is to have a situation where the stewards of that responsibility and the environment actually come to an agreement that what's best for the environment needs to be adhered to by the department. Along with those consent decrees are actions and/or dollars that the department has to act on in order to meet those decrees. So, my point is, are you saying that the environment comes secondary in your, in your speech or your position, or the environment is primary?
I say, I have a problem. I am involved in-
Thank you for not answering the question. I'm done.
That was a very political answer, Doctor Williams.
We're the politicians-
Yeah, okay, come on.
No, it's a matter of transparency. My first contention is always, be upfront with people. And a lot of times, yes, a mandate can be, the cost of a mandate can be estimated at the time of that mandate. And, as long as everybody knows what they're getting into and chooses to get into it, hey, that's true cost and best guess. And, I say, I've done it many times on many projects, and the-
Doctor, did you go to school to make guesses? You have a DR next to your name. Did you go to school so that you can make guesses?
No.
No. I went to school-
You just, I just mixed your words. You said true cost and guesses.
Yes. A true cost is your, if you are trying to project twenty, here's one. What was the cost of the Cairo water supply? Six billion dollars in nineteen seventy-two dollars. But, we knew that's approximate, that's our best guess, as to what it's going to cost the people of Cairo, Egypt twenty years from now. This is how much it is. It's something like here. We have a problem, the mandate goes through, nobody estimates how much it's going to cost to do it. A good example, stormwater. It was estimated that by the year 2020, stormwater in LA was going to cost eight billion dollars. The prop O is five hundred million dollars. Sanitation gave an estimate as to eight to ten percent for operations and maintenance each year.
Okay.
That gives me an idea, but did anyone come up with it?
Thank you. Now, Stephanie Taylor.
Wait, wait, can I?
Oh, Doctor, oh, was it Doctor Alarcon?
Doctor Alarcon. Doctor Williams, I just want, I just want to understand. I, I could not understand what your point was, to tell you the truth.
My point is-
No, I'm not asking what your point is right now. Hold on, let me ask my question, please. My question is, are you, are, do you agree that we have to do these upgrades to comply with state law?
To com, right now, yes, we have to-
Okay, so that's a yes, okay.
Yes.
Now, the, the second question is, if we don't do these rate upgrades, would, would it cost us more? Would it cost the ratepayers more?
Yes, because in-
I, I, no, so that's a yes. It would, it would cost more.
Yeah.
Okay. So, you're, you're, I'm, I'm trying to figure out what your point was. Your point, let me see if I can say it. Was your point that we should have done it incrementally a long time ago?
It should have been upfront at the time that you're fighting the court case.
Okay, okay. So, with regard to the matter that is directly before us?
We're-
With regard to the matter that is before us?
Yes.
Are you saying that we really don't have a choice but to support this?
Right, right now, I do not believe we have an effective choice.
No, no, we have a choice because we have to make the decision. So, so I, that was a collective way, I got it, but I was, there I was being facetious. Okay, so, can I ask, I just want to ask the department, when we bring this to council, can you, can you give us the analysis of how much it would cost if we don't do this? How much it would cost the ratepayer if we don't? I'm not asking Doctor Williams at this point, I'm asking the department.
Yeah, well, either EPA or-
They're not the department.
Yeah, yeah.
Enrique, step forward, please. My question is-
We've got two more public speaker cards.
But, can, can you provide, as this goes forward, can you provide an analysis of how much it would cost if we don't do the rate increase? How much it would cost the ratepayers?
Absolutely. We, we have done some estimate, Enrique's already our Director of the Bureau of Sanitation. We can provide numbers like that, estimates of what it would be like if we were to not act.
Okay, okay.
You're gonna come up and give a full-
Thank you. And I, and I, you concur with Doctor Williams that it would be more than the rate we're asking for?
Yes, and we see, we see that even now when we end up doing an emergency repair versus-
Now, Stephanie Taylor, and then Mimi Soto, and that, that'll close off the public comment. And then, the staff should be prepared to come up and make their presentation. And if we don't, don't finish this by ten, we'll keep it in committee and we'll keep going and have another special meeting with a single agenda item, which will be this one. Okay, Stephanie, then Mimi.
Good morning. I'm Stephanie Taylor from the Green LA Coalition. I'm representing the Urban Ecosystems Work Group that, that does include the Sierra Club, Angeles Chapter, Tree People, Heal the Bay, Food and Water Watch, the Southern California Water Street Council, the River Project, and others. So, we agree that it's critical to raise revenues for our Clean Water and Water Management Goals, but I want to just mention one thing. When I testified before this committee in May, Green LA's concern at that time was that the, with the sewer fee increase, the public was also going to be asked to weigh in on the DWP increase and also later the county parcel tax for stormwater abatement. And so, we were concerned about this, and we had asked the city to create a clear and coordinated message about how to explain this to the public and why all these water fee increases were all very necessary. So, we had several conversations with the Bureau of Sanitation and DWP, the general managers and the staff, and both departments agreed that better integrated messaging was necessary, but they acknowledged that it was difficult to do. So, at this point, we're asking that the council help improve the actual integration between wastewater and stormwater management project and goals, and we need seamless policies and laws that eliminate any contradictions between wastewater and stormwater goals, and we need the city department to better able to coordinate projects and achieve efficiency. So, in closing, we do strongly urge you to support the Bureau of Sanitation's request to increase the Clean Water Program fees. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, state your name for the record.
Hi, yeah, my name is Mimi Soto, representing SEIU Local 721, and also a resident of the City Council District 12. What I do want to say is, the word upgrade, that sounds like a luxury. This is not an upgrade, it's a necessity. So, I, I wanna, I wanna clarify that, because, you know, some folks may think, well, you know, upgrading is like upgrading from a Honda to BMW. This is just a necessity, so our workers in the city could be more efficient in, in doing their work and maintaining, maintaining the wastewater system. Also, I want to say that, that it is a lot less costly, and I would be one of the ones also paying as a resident of, of the City of Los Angeles. I, I believe it would be a lot more costly for us not to have this rate hike. Not only as a union rep, but again, I go back to, I, I've lived in the City of Los Angeles all my life. We do not like it when- We do not like it when, when, when there's problems and, and, and pipes burst and all that other stuff. Not only is it, is it costly to the city, but it's an inconvenience to residents. So we're just here in support of. Thank you.
So one, one of your main points is that, to remind us that upgrade, some people might interpret it as though it's not necessary.
Right.
You're saying this, this has to do with necessary-
Absolutely.
Maintenance, things of that nature.
Absolutely.
So you just want to make clear that they're not going to bedazzle the pipes and stuff like that.
That's right. That's right. No bedazzling. Thank you.
Okay, Steph. Okay, so, justifying your need for the proposed rate increase, and what you've done to ensure that the rate increases are smaller as possible, and why they're necessary now, and I'd also like for you to talk about your budget and the staff reductions that have already taken place to date, and how much additional revenue this rate increase is expected to generate, and where, where it will be directed, just to get, get this conversation started.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Honorable Members of the Committee, Enrique Zaldiva, Director of the Bureau of Sanitation, and it is a, a very important request that we have forwarded to the council. We, of course, do not at all take this lightly. We realize what it means to be asking for a rate adjustment for a rate increase. It is, the wastewater system, the program, is one of the most important basic assets, infrastructure assets of the city. You heard from the speakers, but this is something you know firsthand. This is a system that you want to work well and work reliably at all times of the day. You had asked us in our last committee back in May to do a number of things. We have gone back, the committee stressed to us two very important things. One was to ensure that we do a very transparent and comprehensive outreach to the community. Since that date and immediately beginning since, since the last committee meeting, we have reached out to a number of community groups, neighborhood councils, business organizations, and average, and any, and common community groups. In total, over forty-three presentations, feedback presentations, and to these organizations. We're humble to say that we have, in all of these presentations, have received unanimous positive feedback. Some have been generous enough to lend us their written support, and these are letters that you have received, the committee has received, over the course of the last two months, of the support for the basic need of this rate. As has been, as has been said already by other speakers, this is not anything of a luxury that we're proposing to do. It's to maintain, as Councilmember Cardenas eloquently said the last time, is the basic dignity of a system like a wastewater system. One must never experience a spill in any one street in any one community. One must never go to a beach where it ends up being closed because of a problem of a wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah, I think everybody agrees with that.
So-
So we gotta look at the, just, you know, staging, how, how do we stage this? What, what have you done to downsize? Where the new stream of revenue will come from with the rate increase? How much of a rate, how much of a, how much revenue will this rate adjustment create? And I, I don't think you're gonna find anybody up here who says that, well, I'm willing to risk the beach on a spill, so you're preaching to the converted on that.
No, I, because I, I think I wanted to just address on the points, and so on the, on the outreach, I've already touched on that. There were two financial metrics also that you wanted us to really look at carefully, but on, with regards to the cuts and the reductions, Madam Chair, we have reduced over 200 positions in this program over the last three years. In fact, this past year, we reduced 75 positions, eliminated 75 positions. Have made a number of other reductions in our expense, over twenty million dollars on an annual basis. And we, particularly in the last three years, we have made a special effort to make sure that we have reduced everywhere and anything that we can, as well as to try to capitalize on potential revenue and monetization opportunities in this program. For example, you know, we own a farm in Kern County where we manage biosolids, which is inherent to this program. We happen to own water rights inherent with the ownership of the farm. We have started a process in which we are looking to monetize those water rights. And water rights in California, I don't have to tell you guys, you know, that, you know, they're an intricate process to begin with. So it'll be a while, but we have began the process of monetizing that for the benefit of the program with an intent of reducing the need for the rate, to mitigate the, the rate as a whole. So, so those are examples of the things we have done. On the financial metrics, Madam Chair, I'm going to ask Lisa Maori, who is the Chief Financial Officer of Sanitation, to tell you what we have done since our last committee, and how we have come up with a different dial on the financial metrics that ultimately benefit the ratepayers.
All right. Good morning, Lisa Maori. One of the items that we looked at was our year-end cash balance for our capital program. Our original proposal recommended that we maintain a minimum one-hundred-million-dollar cash balance. Looking back at that, we determined that that was an appropriate number when we were spending two-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars a year on construction. However, our capital improvement program for the next few years is, is more modest than that. In this current year, for instance, it's only one-hundred-and-fifteen million. So we changed the recommendation, rather than having one-hundred-million as the base amount, to have one-half of the capital program. So for instance, in this year, the minimum cash balance for the capital program would be fifty-eight million, half of what we're anticipating spending. We feel this still provides us enough cash balance that we'll be able to meet all the needs of the program without having too much money set aside in years when we're not doing that much construction. So that's one thing that allowed us to do some reductions to the early years of, of the rate adjustments. The second thing we looked at was the debt service coverage. The original report had recommended maintaining minimum debt service coverage of 2.5x for our senior lien debt and 1.5x for total debt. Enrique challenged me to move a little outside my comfort zone on that, and so we determined that we could reduce those amounts a little bit to 2.45x for the senior debt and 1.45x for total debt, and still feel comfortable that we'd be able to maintain our AA rating.
Okay, anything else? So, tell, tell me again, the additional revenue this rate increase is expected to generate, how will it be allocated?
Madam Chair, the primary destination of that revenue will be the capital program. These will be sewer projects, projects at the wastewater treatment plants of all kinds, process-based or just infrastructure-based at the treatment plants. So the, the majority of the revenue would be dedicated for capital programs. In terms of the dollar amount that the proposed additional revenue, the total dollar amount each year, Lisa, if you can-
Sure.
Yeah, because I think, I think we need to have that kind of specificity.
Right. In the five-year series of rate increases that are in the current CAO report, the additional revenue is five-hundred-and-eighty-two million dollars in the first five years.
So it's, it's not, there's some issue about forecasting beyond five years, is there not? Is there a problem?
Um, the, the concern raised by the CAO in their report is that going beyond the five years, it can be pretty difficult to project what your costs are going to be. To, to a certain extent, that's, that's absolutely true. We feel pretty comfortable about our capital costs. We've always, well, always, at least for the last 20 years, been doing a 10-year capital improvement program. We always look at that 10-year window. So we feel comfortable for our construction costs in there. We feel we've got adequate escalation factors to take into account changes in prices of construction material and labor. The only thing that might change is exactly which projects we do. We may find some of those we don't need to do. Others may be accelerated based on updated flow or new condition assessments. So we, we feel pretty comfortable about the numbers in the capital program.
Okay, so sanitation's been proposing, just as a model, a 10-year period of rate increases with smaller increases for the first two years and larger increases for the last eight years. For the CAO, why has the CAO been recommending a five-year period of rate increases instead of the 10-year as proposed by sanitation?
Again, Emilia Rodriguez, CAO's office. One of the reasons we're proposing a shorter period is precisely as was mentioned, we can't really project reliably beyond a five-year period, particularly on some of the cost areas, areas that present cost pressure that SEM is exposed to, such as labor costs, for instance. A lot of the recently negotiated labor agreements only go three years, so the top that we would be comfortable projecting out would be five years, for instance. The regulatory environment, while the immediate, while the projected rate increases aren't really considering any new regulatory changes, we don't know what that environment's gonna be like beyond five years. There's 56 TMDLs that are coming forward that have some bearing on wastewater effluents. There's a number of air and, and clean water requirements that are in the horizon that would also have to-
Let me put mine on the other stuff, because we're gonna run out of time. Okay, what I, what I'm gonna do, because I want to make sure everybody has a chance to put their issues on the table, and I think we're gonna have to do another round, and I want the next to be just this item only. I'm gonna ask you, I want more, an in-depth presentation on the following questions. At the conclusion of the proposed term for rate increases, do you anticipate that sanitation will have to come back with additional requests? Or do you expect that the Bureau can then manage the city's sewer system with its existing resources and fees? That's number one. Now, sanitation estimates a rate increase of 4.5% after the first two years versus a CAO recommendation of 6.5% for the first two years, and I want to know what that translates into with respect to dollar amounts for the ratepayer. That's number two. Number three, what is the difference in the level, level of job creation between going from a five-year scenario to a 10-year scenario? Because I'm concerned about the forecasting issue and, and cost increases and that sort of thing, just what you've just brought up, and I want to, I want to see that spread out. And then, next question is how many city employees have been paid through the general fund, and how many were absorbed into sanitation and are now being paid through special funds? And last question, sanitation's report notes that it's heard to, had a great deal of support during its presentation to the communities and business groups, and hopefully you've collected letters, whatever, you can put them all in a binder and make sure that all the committee members have that for the next meeting. And I, I want to put this on the record, got your questions. If you need written copy, let me know, we'll get it to you, and then we'll come back to this. I'll have the CLA tell us when we can come back, and then single issue. So, Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I have a couple of quick questions. It was mentioned by the CAO about the unknown changes, unknown changes that may occur should regulations be passed either by the state legislature, the federal government, or whatever quality management district may have requirements as well. When, when those kinds of changes occur, are they likely to increase or decrease the department's expenditures?
Well, historically, they, they've, they've had the effect of increasing the department's expenditures. We saw this over the last round of rate increases between '05 and '08. There were nitrification requirements at a couple of wastewater treatment plants that, that utilized a good portion of the proceeds from those rate increases. We expect that same pattern over future requirements.
Okay, so, we don't necessarily have any semblance of a pattern to depend on that says when regulations are changed, at least in the last 30 or 40 years, that they cause a decrease in expenditures. Ninety-nine point nine-nine percent of the time, they have caused increases in expenditures, correct?
I would tend to agree with that.
And then if we don't meet those demands or those new rules or regulations, does that cause more expenditures on the department via fines and penalties and things of that nature?
Absolutely.
And lawyers' costs if we end up having to go to court over, being sued over not meeting our, our regulations and demands?
Well, a case in point, there was the 550-million-dollar settlement, well, litigation with the CSSA, the Collection System Settlement Agreement.
Uh huh, okay. Also, Enrique, just basically, you know, not to get into detail, please, scheduled maintenance costs to the department versus emergency maintenance, which is more expensive?
I mean, clearly, the emergency response.
Okay, it's much more expensive than scheduled-
Almost sevenfold in many instances.
Okay, and that was my next question. Just, so, five times as much, at least.
At least.
On average, seven times as much. So therefore, if you have scheduled maintenance of, say, twenty million dollars worth of scheduled maintenance, it could actually cost the department upwards of a hundred-million dollars if we respond after a spill, after a breakage, after something bad happening. It could be as much as a hundred-plus-million dollars for that same amount of fixing of our current old, old aging system, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And is part of the reason why you're coming to the council for these rate increases, is part of the reason that you feel it's your responsibility to be able to schedule as much infrastructure maintenance as possible before we have problems?
Definitely. That's our way of responding to what we see our charge and our, the trust that is vested upon us to maintain the system in the expectation that the residents have, which, and so this is our, our best way of ensuring that we meet those expectations.
And my last question, Madam Chair, is when we schedule maintenance, I would venture to say, would you agree that there is a reduction in the quality of life, perhaps in traffic issues or what have you, inconvenience to that local community, because there's cones and, and workers out there, and maybe we have to replace a pipe or something like that? But that happens in an emergency case as well, right? There's similar, however, when we have scheduled maintenance, we can warn a community, let a community know businesses ahead of time that there's gonna be a disruption of traffic, et cetera, along a particular corridor, correct?
Yes.
And in an emergency case, how much of a notice do we give them when a pipe bursts or what have you, got sewer spill, you know, we got all these regulators on top of us counting the gallons, et cetera? How much warning do we give to the businesses and those local residences?
No warning, no notice. I mean, it's, it happens, they notify us of the problem, actually.
Exactly. See, it's reversed. The community lets you know, hey, get this stuff off of my street, it stinks, it's terrible, what am I gonna do? I'm afraid for my health, right? So my last point, Madam Chair, is when we allow, whether it's via policymakers for a 10-year period during the Riordan administration where we had no increases, in my opinion, that was a period of time where we let happen what happened, rather than being proactive, businesslike, and make sure that we're stewards of the dollar, stewards of, of the money, and also stewards of public health. My last point is, when we have a breakage, that's the difference between a scheduled maintenance and a breakage, especially when it comes to sewer, a sewer breakage. There is a diminishing of quality of life, other than traffic inconveniences, et cetera, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, so there's the health issue that we're responding to when we allow something to happen like a breakage, rather than being proactive and getting to it before it becomes that kind of problem.
That's correct.
And at least, once again, at least a fivefold, on average, at least a fivefold cost to the ratepayer when we respond to an emergency breakage rather than a scheduled maintenance.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Just to, I'm sorry, just to iterate why that's an urgency, at this point, 30% of the sewer lines are older than 80 years old. Eighty years is the average life of a sewer line. Going forward 10 years, more than half of the system would, would exceed that threshold. On the other hand, the funding has been scaled back significantly. In '08, '09, the budget included about 330 million for the capital program, which included all of the project costs and labor. It's currently at 186 million because of, you know, revenues have essentially been flat or declining.
It went from 330 a couple of budget cycles ago, now down to- It went from three-thirty a couple of budget cycles ago, now down to...
One-eighty-six.
Okay, less than one-hundred-and-ninety.
Right.
So that was a cutback in one fiscal year of about one-hundred-and-forty million plus. That's the wrong direction.
Mr. Alarcon, and then Mr. Corret.
I'm curious, where did the revenues, what was reduced?
As far as reduction measures over, over the last few years, various measures have been employed to minimize rate burden.
No, 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 that's not my question. My question was relative to revenue.
Oh, where the revenues were reduced?
Why did the revenue reduce?
Combination of the economy as well as a reduced water usage.
How does that work? How does that work?
There've been more subscribers to the low-income program.
So vacancy rate, for example, has an impact on...
Right, I think there was a period where the vacancy rate exceeded their norm of a five percent a year or two ago.
Okay, so that has a direct impact on, but, but that's almost fifty percent, that's almost a fifty percent reduction. Is that correct?
No, we had a reduction roughly of about, just under forty million for economic reasons, vacancy, the delinquency of non-payment, that kind of related.
Right, we were...
You said three-hundred and some to one-hundred-and-eighty or something?
Correct, that's a component of the sewer service charge fee that's dedicated to the capital program. Just looking at in terms of revenues, basically on the rate modeling, we're expecting five-hundred-and-twenty million to be received last year.
Councilman Alarcon, I mean, let me try...
I have one question answered.
Let me try to answer that question. Is, is the capital program the one that was reduced? And we reduced it because of our projection, how we're going to be able to pay the debt service. The debt service, the debt service, the interest rate on the, our plan was to sell more bonds and to basically borrow money, and our ability to pay for that was questioned. So it's the interest rate, and that's the amount, so for every dollar, you can actually borrow ten dollars. So the forty-million-dollar reduction, it impacts how much we can borrow. So we did not want to borrow money and not be able to pay it.
So a portion of the, what was the, what were those two figures you used? Three-hundred and something down to one-eighty or something?
Uh, yeah, so three-hundred and, three-thirty down to one-eighty, one-eighty-six.
Okay, so, but a large portion of that is because we did not, we're not paying interest?
Basically, we did not sell bonds. We reduced our program to allow, to stay within our funding, because we did not want to borrow money and have us be liable for more interest because of the reduced revenue and not being able to do that, because we can't expose ourselves to that.
And we have to maintain sufficient level of funding for the debt service costs on the bonds, as well as to keep up with the incremental increases in obligatory...
The question I have, because we're going to be leaving in a few minutes, but this is a permanent rate increase, is it not?
Yes.
Okay. We, we are trying to catch up relative to the deferred maintenance. Once we catch up, why do we need to have the same level of workforce?
Very good, Councilman.
Thank you.
There's some annual investment that is inherent to the size of this program. You know, we, in total, this is about a twenty-four-billion-dollar-valued infrastructure asset. And so there's an annual investment that needs to be made on it, regardless of whether it's stuff that has been neglected from the past, that hasn't been done. At some point, we will reach a steady flow of annual maintenance, which could be one or two percent of the total value of the infrastructure. So if it's twenty-four billion dollars, roughly...
Well, that's a lot of ifs. Is there any way you can show me that?
Sure.
I mean, yeah, when you come back at the next meeting, what I really want to know is, what is the workforce going to look like if we pass this rate? And at what point does that workforce get reduced? And other costs need to be, that other costs may increase, that's what you're saying. You're saying while the labor force may be reduced after deferred maintenance is caught up with, there are other forces that will drive the costs up. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, with regards to the workforce itself, most of our, if not all of our staff is associated with O and M and not with construction-related, on our side, anyway. The construction jobs, those come all from the private sector, from where we do the construction projects.
The repair, the maintenance, deferred maintenance?
The O and M staffing that we have...
O and M.
Yeah, operation and maintenance. So say the operating, the staffing level at our treatment plants, you know, those are pretty steady state as they stand right now. Same thing with our wastewater collection system. You know, we have a program that is partly mandated and partly on our own, in which we maintain the wastewater collection system, the sewer system, with a certain frequency of cleaning and inspection. So we have those that are going to pretty much be steady state.
So it's the contracting out for the, to catch up on the deferred maintenance?
On the, on the capital of sewers that are over, that are already aging and we have identified as needing...
That's not really maintenance, that's, that's, is that deferred maintenance?
That's capital.
That's capital?
That's correct.
But you were talking about maintenance staff. I wasn't talking about maintenance staff.
So are you saying...
I was talking about deferred maintenance, that's maintenance work, but you're saying that the, where the additional costs are in capital infrastructure improvement...
I see, I see what you're saying. So you want us to lay out the workload...
What I want to know is why the rate needs to be maintained after five years, if, if you caught up on your deferred maintenance? That's the fundamental question I'm asking.
Right. Yeah, so we need to show you graphically how the rates will be, as Madam Chair asked earlier, where is the revenue going? And if you're saying that if someone is going for maintenance, and at some point we reach a point in which we have caught up with maintenance, you know, where is that reduction...
Deferred maintenance, deferred maintenance.
Deferred maintenance.
Regular maintenance, but deferred maintenance.
Yeah.
And part of the issue is with six-thousand-seven-hundred miles of sewers, once we catch up, if we're looking at an eighty-year life of sewers, we need to do eighty-four miles of sewer rehab a year. Right now, we're only doing sixty. So we're going to have to do even more in the future.
I get all that, I just need you to show it to me in specific numbers. What, but I'm, but I'm also concerned, you're saying you're going to contract out for the deferred maintenance?
No, no, for the construction. I'm sorry, I mixed up capital and deferred maintenance, Councilman. My mistake.
Yeah, because in your presentation, you made it sound like the reason we need to do this rate increase was because of the deferred maintenance.
No.
Deferred capital.
Deferred capital, so we're not actually increasing our maintenance forces?
No, we're not asking for a staffing increase. If anything, they're proposing a twenty-five cut, which, by the way...
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute, that's, that's, that's just dumb. That's penny-wise and pound foolish. So you're saying the CAO is asking for a twenty-five percent cut on our maintenance side?
Twenty-five percent.
So that we can have more deferred maintenance later on, or...
No, it's not twenty-five percent, twenty-five positions from their current vacancies. They have about one-hundred-and-sixty vacancies now, we're just proposing to...
Oh, so, so that way we can increase our deferred maintenance?
Well, they're, they're actually not...
I don't understand, I don't understand.
Front-line positions, they're mostly a...
You just go through this articulation of how we, this rate increase is going to cover the, you know, the problem with deferred maintenance, but you want to cut twenty-five positions?
To add more...
From our maintenance?
To add more leverage for the capital program. That would add about three million more, three million more in projects that the Bureau could be doing.
Well, it doesn't matter, we won't be able to maintain it once it's built.
Well, all the operating maintenance costs are being, they're incorporated in the rate increases, so there will be resources to maintain them.
Mr. Alarcon, we've got to put these questions on the record.
Jeez, yeah, yeah, I need, I need the CAO to explain to us why we're doing a rate increase and reducing our maintenance staff. No, I, that's, you can answer that next time.
Yeah.
Mr. Corretts, we're not going to vote today. Mr. Corretts?
Yeah, I assume you won't have any time to answer any more questions, but I would just ask, and I think it's already been touched upon, at what point do you achieve a system where none of your piping is over eighty years old? At what point are we actually doing the capital work so that we're not getting behind, we're actually keeping up? And whether your rate increase covers that? And how we make sure that this money primarily goes to infrastructure like sewer line repair and doesn't get diverted to other things? Also, I'd encourage you to do more public outreach. I haven't heard much about outreach in my district, and there are often a lot of loud voices opposed to rate increases, so I would try my best to do more outreach in my area. And that's it.
Okay, so, Mr. CLA, when can we have this matter back if we're a single issue?
We'll work with the CAO and the Bureau of Sanitation to provide responses to all the questions that have been raised today. We're looking at perhaps, you know, perhaps next two to, two to thirty days, I mean, two weeks to thirty days.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll come up with something that works for everybody.
And then I'll close the public comment on that so that we have the entire hour to spend just talking to staff and getting our questions answered, and, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. All right, this is the end of the agenda. Now, this is the period for public comment. Dr. Williams, you filled out a public comment card, that means no, knowing of your signs. Okay, thank you. All right, any others wishing to come up for public comment? If not, the meeting is adjourned.